If I may have your attention, I'm happy to call the May 18th, 2017 meeting of the Board of Trustees of Tarrant County College District to order. We have some special guests with comments, which Dr. Terry Coats.
We vote and one is elected to be the Congeniality Chapter, and I'm pleased to say that we won the Congeniality Award for our chapter.
Congratulations.
We were seen to be the nicest, most communicative, most helpful chapter among all chapters of the regional convention and won the award. We also won awards for the Honors Project and for our college project, and we were named as a Texas Top Chapter. And so it's my pleasure to say thank you very much for sending us to region and for letting us interact with our Phi Theta Kappa students. It's also my pleasure to introduce someone else to you other than Mary Bear, and that would be one of our chapter officers. I'm sorry to say Daniela Castro, who is our chapter president, couldn't make it tonight. She was actually behind a traffic accident coming here and she got delayed. But Daniela is going to UTA on her UTA full ride scholarship, and we're very proud of her. She also was a, one of 100 students selected in Texas as an All Texas Scholar. The other from our chapter, who was one of those 100 out of 730,000 people who attend community college in Texas, is Justin Lozey. You may have seen him at graduation. Justin is a winner of a Gust Wyatt Scholarship and a winner of the All USA Today Scholarship, and he's going to the University of Texas. I'm gonna let Justin tell you a little bit about himself. Justin?
Welcome, Mr. Castro.
Hello, everybody. It's so awesome to be up here. This is my first board meeting. Being here is really great because as a community college student, I've gotten to experience a lot of opportunities, and a lot of those opportunities have come because of Phi Theta Kappa. So as Dr. Coats mentioned, we've had a tremendous year. We've had a really great year because not only did we have a great honors project, we were one of the top 30 chapters to receive a distinction for our honors project. So out of the over 1,200 chapters that submitted a project, we were the top 30 based on our score for the honors project. And in addition to that, we were also selected as one of the top 30 chapters internationally. So there are over 1,200 chapters in Phi Theta Kappa, and based on our performance on both our college project and our honors project, we got distinction as a top chapter. So that's really amazing. So, yeah. And we've also had a lot of individual success as well. I was named to the All USA Academic Team. So out of all the students who submit the scholarship application, the top 20 students representing all of Phi Theta Kappa get selected, and they win a $5,000 scholarship, and they get a trip to Louisiana to receive the award. So in April, last April, I came back from that. And in addition to that, I also received the Gust Wyatt Scholarship Award, which is another 5,000 award awarded through Phi Theta Kappa. So I'm blessed to been able to receive those awards, and a lot of those opportunities would not come, one, if I was not in community college, and two, if I was not a member and an officer of Phi Theta Kappa. So on behalf of all of us, I'd like to thank you all for allowing us to pursue our dreams and aspire to achieve our endeavors. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Justin, you and your fellow student classmates and the faculty that guide you and support you make our work worthwhile, and we congratulate you, and thank you for coming tonight. Sure. Justin, why don't you and Dr. Coats come back and let us take your picture, and we'll get a copy to you.
Can Dr. Capola be over here?
Oh, I don't know. I guess so. Come on up here, Dr. Capola.
Absolutely.
We'll start with Dr. Diane Patrick, who is our guest, who will be sworn in by Judge Mary Tom Cravens Kernutt, who is a Justice of the Peace in District Two in Arlington.
All right. Face this way? Okay. We good like this?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Diane, it is my privilege and honor to be able to be here to administer the oath of office to you. Not only my friend, lifelong friend, neighbor, relative, mentor of mine, thank you. You have been an inspiration to so many of us, and I'm very proud of you, and y'all are lucky to have her. She's gonna do great.
Thank you.
All right. If I could have you raise your right hand for me and repeat after me. I, Diane Porter Patrick.
I, Diane Porter Patrick.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of college trustee.
Of college trustee.
For Tarrant County College.
For Tarrant County College.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state, so help me God.
And of this state, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
He's the most sworn in husband in the state. Ned, come let Diane introduce.
I would like to take this opportunity to thank all of you. I have enjoyed serving with you during the eight months I've been here and really look forward to continuing to serve, but I really couldn't do this without my husband, Dr. Ned Patrick, of whom we've been married 51 years. Now, I know that makes us sound really old, but we're not. He has put up with a lot, 25 years of elective public service. But again, it is just so exciting to be part of this institution. And people, you know, said to me, "Why would you run for something else?" You know, and I said, "I just can't stand not to because it's such a great organization." And what you do to serve 99,000 students every single year is absolutely amazing. Tarrant County College is a solution, and a great one at that. So I thank all of you for what you're doing for Tarrant County College, but most especially for the students in this county. We're very blessed to have such wonderful collaborative programs with school districts that provide amazing opportunities for our students, and many more great things to come. Again, thank you very much.
Dr. Michael Evans, who will be sworn in by the Honorable David Cook, the mayor of the city of Mansfield.
Thought you were calling me sweetheart.
Well, no. We haven't gotten that close. Come on up, honey.
Don't be shy. First of all, I just want to say it's my pleasure to administer this oath to a fine, fine man, certainly a mentor in the city of Mansfield, and the contributions that he has made to the city of Mansfield are just amazing, as a pastor, just as a friend, as a president of the school board, as a doctor. I'm often calling him, telling him I'm confused, whether it's Dr. Evans or Pastor Evans or Mr. President, or whatever the case may be. But we're adding one more, one more to his pedigree, and it's just, you know, Tarrant County is getting a lot of, a lot of good in this man right here, and it's my pleasure to administer the oath at this time. I'm Michael Anthony Evans, Sr.
I'm Michael Anthony Evans, Sr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of college trustee.
Of college trustee.
For Tarrant County College.
For Tarrant County College.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Madam President and Chancellor Gio Venini, and to my fellow board members, my new board family, I want to thank God for this opportunity that he has given me to serve the students, the faculty, and the staff of Tarrant County College. Let me recognize, of course, you saw her, my sweetheart of 30 years. We aren't at 50 yet, you know. I'm only 50. But my wife, my high school sweetheart, my two boys, Stan fellows, Michael Junior, Richard, my youngest. My boys who I dearly love, I work hard to impress, I really do, and to make them proud every day. We have members of the Bethlehem Baptist Church family, they're here, those who are here, few are staying. I thank them for allowing me to serve as their pastor for more than 26 years, and also I thank them because they've allowed me to serve in public life as well. They have been my support. To my former board members, my MISD board family, President Raul Gonzalez is here, Stan Raul, Vice President Karen Marcucci, Beth Light, our past president, I just appreciate them, and I love them. We've come to love each other, and thank you all for loving me enough to be here today. I definitely want to thank the mayor. David Cook is a good friend of mine, not only a good friend, but a prayer partner, and I thank the Lord for him. She's not here, but I need to give special thanks to Dr. Carrie Thompson. Dr. Carrie Thompson was the first person to hire me and to call me into service here at Tarrant County College, and then to Gladys Emerson and Mr. Norman Stewart, who hired me full-time, first as a college-bound counselor, then later on, they gave me the opportunity to serve as coordinator of the GD and ESL programs for the district. So I appreciate them. Now, let me say this to my new board family, that I pledge, I pledge to give you my best, I really do, and always to have the well-being and the advancement of our students at heart, number one, and to serve and to support, of course, our staff, and to see to it that we can work hard together to help give the people of Tarrant County that second chance, that boost, that drive that they need in order to make it. And to each and every one of you, I thank you so much for the well wishes that I've received already. It is my prayer that I will not ever let my constituents down. God bless you. Again, thank you very much. Madam President, thank you. Look forward to serving with you.
of the Texas District.
Oh, I like your voice.
The Court of Appeals.
What do you want me to be, Prater? I just wanted to say before I administer the oath, Bill and I go back to 1984. We used to practice at the same law firm, and it's a testament to how, once you're a friend of Bill Greenhill's, you're always a friend, because we haven't worked together for 27 years, and he thought of me to come here and swear him in today, so I'm very honored.
And I'll have a few remarks after this about, there's another family here. Oh, the retreats at Los Snakers. Okay, we'll talk about it.
Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, William Duke Greenhill.
I, William Duke Greenhill.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of college trustee.
Of the office of college trustee.
For Tarrant County College.
For Tarrant County College.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
Of the laws of the United States.
And of this state, so help me God.
And of this state, so help me God. Thank you. You standing on the finger.
You can make me stand here?
Well, no. Well, anyway, I'm so, I didn't, I've been, I just got back from vacation and just came in about 30 minutes ago, and as you see, I'm well, well, well dressed. But we have, we have another family here, it's the Law Snaker family, and you'll appreciate this. No, Tom Law was your lawyer. I started out at Law Snaker and Gamble, and Lisa, Lisa was there when I was there, and John Kerr, I want John to stand up, he's, he's her husband, he was there too. They were trial lawyers. And Carol Bracken, where are you, Carol? There's Carol. Carol was there as a real estate lawyer, and, but Tom Law was a good friend of Jenkins Garrett.
Yes.
And Angela, you were there later on. Okay. You're younger. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry you're standing right here by me. But we were a team, we, I guess I was the real estate lawyer, and anyway, it was, and Jenkins Garrett was a good friend of Tom Law, and Tom Law represented this organization for a very long time, probably until very recently, I don't know. But anyway, I really appreciate the opportunity to serve Tarrant County College, the district. I've said it many times, the part of the job that I like the best is, is being here with you, and being here with my board team. Being out with the, with the, with the students, that fulfills, that fulfills me. That's, that's the thing, that's what it's all about, is they've got grit, the students have grit, they've got their problems, they've got their, but they're working through it, and I'm glad I'm a part of that. So thank you very much for the opportunity, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, we will move on to the agenda for the meeting, and those of you who might need or want to leave, you're certainly excused. I would ask for approval of minutes of the meeting of April 20th. Motion to approve by Mr. Heath, seconded by Dr. Morrison. Any corrections, additions? All those in favor, aye. Any opposed? Item number six, consideration and approval of job order contracting general contractor services agreement with BaseCom to provide construction services for information station kiosk on northeast campus, not to exceed the amount of $187,796.96. Ms. Petty isn't with us today, but she is well represented. Motion to approve, Mr. Heath, seconded by Dr. Evans.
I'm going to.
Any questions?
I'm gonna excuse myself.
And yes, when, when the vote comes, right, and from discussion. Any questions of Mr. Prater? Ready for the? I'm sorry? We should ask him.
You can ask me some questions.
Break you in.
Well, I've got my team right behind me, so ask away. I have to apologize because I got informed by Dr. LeBlanc that I'm not as pretty as any of that, and I take offense to that.
None of us are, so welcome to our world. All those in favor of item number six, aye, please. All those in favor of item number six, aye please? Any opposed? Item number seven, consideration and approval of job order contracting, and one abstention. Thank you. Item number seven, consideration and approval of job order contracting construction trade services agreement with Concept Facility Services to provide water main distribution connections on northeast campus, not to exceed $490,000. Motion to approve. Mr. Heed, seconded by Dr. Patrick. Questions? Again, if you're new to us and, and our proceedings, we have been over this agenda with the teams that represent the items under consideration, so a lot of questions and fine tuning has already occurred, just to be sure you know we're not just rubber stamping. All right, all ready for the question? All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Item number eight, consideration and approval of inter-local agreement with Texas A&amp;M University Engineering Experiment Station to perform continuous commissioning services at the south campus in the amount of $532,940. Motion to approve. Dr. Morrison, seconded by Mr. Greenhill. Questions? All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? One, one no. Mr. Heed. I think that's all for you, Dr., Mr. Prater.
Dr. Prater, I love it when I look at him.
Thank you. Item number nine, consideration and approval of purchase agreement with SKC Communications to provide equipment, parts, and systems to be installed in 50 classrooms district-wide in the amount of $511,620.46. Motion to approve. Mr. Heed, seconded by Dr. Evans. Questions of Mr. Ragoo? All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Item carries. Item number 10, consideration and approval of one-year contract extension with Alucion to provide central help desk services in the amount of $877,404. Motion to approve. Mr. Greenhill, seconded by Mr. Heed. Questions?
I do have a question, please. Mr. Ragoo, could you talk to us a little bit about what are some measures that we've implemented to try and minimize some of the calls that are going to the help desk, whether it's, you know, measuring, training, changing applications? If you could talk a little bit about that, because that's, that's quite a bit of money, so, if you don't mind.
Yeah, absolutely. It's a great question. The two first things that we're doing to reduce the number of calls into a service desk, one is to have fewer passwords. Fewer IDs and fewer passwords leads to fewer requests to change those passwords. So, we're embarking upon a single sign-on engagement to explore further ways to have one user ID and password for more applications rather than having a separate one for each. The second way is to actually have fewer calls into the desk by allowing users to reset their own passwords. We have a self-service password reset tool that we've just started deploying at this point, and it now needs more of a mass broad distribution. It's in testing right now, but it is, over the course of the next few months or so, we're going to be rolling that out with mass communication and more, a lot more distribution. So, those should certainly reduce the number of calls that we have coming into the service desk. Yep. No, no problem. Any, any questions?
Ready for the question? All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11, consideration and approval of purchase agreement with Total Communications for Network Life Cycle Replacement Equipment in the amount of $481,782.89. Motion to approve. Dr. Evans, yes, yeah, thank you. Dr. Evans, seconded by Mr. Greenhill. I've got a new voice down there we have to get used to. Questions, comments? All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Ragoo.
Thank you very much.
We also, we're not going to misbehave.
No, I think not. I'm counting on Dr. Ragoo to let that happen. Item number 12, consideration and approval of purchase agreement with Guitar Center Stores for Theater Sound System at the southeast campus in the amount of $142,534.47. Motion to approve. Dr. Patrick? Seconded, Mr. Heed. Any questions of Dr. Coppola? All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Monthly Financial Report, Dr. McLendon?
Good evening, Chancellor and Madam Chairman. All right. April 2017, we are going to be reviewing expenses that are greater than 75%. If we look at eight twelve, would be 67%, so we always go 5% higher. Total income to date is as expected, and it's similar as last year, so we're sitting on about 90%. All right? If we look at our expenses, we review items that will be greater than 75%. As mentioned, we, if you find percentages that are higher, they reflect prepaid expenses or encumbrances reflecting that they provide benefits more than one period, so that's why you would see a higher number. Finance and I have reviewed all items, and we have found none that we have not previously mentioned that would be higher than that. Overall expenses, and I just want to mention this, is 66.7% versus where we would be at 67%. So, investments? Okay.
Any questions of Dr. McLendon?
All right. Pools. We have, in the pools, we have a decrease of $5.4 million. That is short-term. Then we look at for short-term, which are interim for 90 to 180 days. We have two items of maturity of $20 million, and we have a purchase of one $20 million item. If we look at our U.S. Agency Securities, we purchased one $10 million item, all right? And if we look at our total portfolio, our beginning balance was $356 million, our ending balance is $341 million, and so the difference was $15 million. When we look at our total investment portfolio, yield is 1.03%, all right? If we look at our spread, which is comparing to the one-year T-bill, is .27%, and our weighted average maturity, or commonly known as our WAM, is 372 days versus 365. Any questions?
Our interest is going up, and you can attribute that to what?
Well, there's a, there's a, there's a series. One of them is the economy. Also, we have what's happening overseas. There's, a lot of the interest is psychosomatic, which is people have a greater feeling on what's coming, they have a more confidence into the economy, and those are some of the questions that are doing, that are driving our interest up. But they're, overall, we do foresee that interest will continue. The Fed has actually increased twice while they've been small, but that, some of the things that we attribute to that. Yes, sir.
Let me ask you this question. I should have asked you this years ago. When you, you apparently, are you doing the buying and selling? Do you have a broker that's advising you, or do you just?
We have, our own team does the buying.
Your, your, your own team, and you analyze things, and you do the buying and the selling?
Yes, sir. What we do is we go out and we ask for three quotes, and then out of the three quotes, we will see what's the best. As far as the selling, we typically let the maturity drive that. And what had happened before, Mr. Greenhill, which is an excellent question, is when you see that things are happening before maturity, that's because, they've, they've called them. They've called them in. That's, that's a play that they do. We'll, we'll look at the long term, we're hoping it's going to be five years, but if the interest would be going down, they will sell it, and if, if the interest is going up, then we would save.
I have another question. We, we revised our, our, our investment policy last year to make it, quote, "more flexible", end quote, to, we, we, there's not much things we can do to make it more flexible. Has that helped you at all, or have you considered some of the flexibility, quote, "flexibility" that we?
Yes, sir. Well, there's two things. One, you have given me exact guidance, which I like. By giving me the WAM, you've exactly told me how you want the portfolio. So you're, we're trying to do that, and for that, I really appreciate. Come, come down. There's one thing that we have added, which is a good question. If you look at our short-term, we did not have that before, Mr. Greenhill. So that 90 to 100 days was, is actually, it's been a benefit, because most, before we were going with just our investment pools, which means something that you can sell, you can have money in one day, while the, the short-term pools, we would, we want to keep them from 90 to 100 days, and then the long-term, as practice, we will keep them till the maturity. So I think that, to me, it, it has been helpful. It has, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. McLendon. Dr. Giovinini?
Dr. Govan, please.
Good evening, Mrs. Appleman, Chancellor Giovinini, and members of the board. It's my pleasure this evening to introduce a new staff member, if he would join me. I believe he's here. There we go. Eli Mercer is joining our team at northeast campus. He is our new Dean of Technology, Health, and Business. His academic area of specialization is entrepreneurship, and his career has been focused on launching new businesses and growing global connections between education, business, and government in the areas of innovation, technology, commercialization, and economic development. Eli has held leadership positions in higher education since 2005, when he brought 15 years of experience in the private sector as an entrepreneur and business owner to the role of founding General Manager of the Center for Global Entrepreneurship at Thunderbird School of Global Management. In 2008, he joined the IC squared, or IC two? IC squared Institute at the University of Texas in Austin, where he served as Manager of Global Technology Commercialization Programs, as well as the Macomb School of Business as an adjunct lecturer of entrepreneurship and marketing. Eli has worked with and consulted with community colleges since 2009, when he joined Austin Community College International Business Institute as an adjunct professor of international business. His doctoral research, which is near completion, is focused on the role of community colleges in regional entrepreneurship, innovation, and economic development. So, it is my pleasure to introduce to you Eli Mercer.
Welcome, Mr. Mercer.
Mrs. Appleman, Dr. Giovinini, and members of the board, it's a distinct pleasure and an honor to be here with you today. I'm very excited to join the TCC team.
And we welcome you.
Excuse me?
We welcome you.
Thank you very much.
So with the, with the swearing in of our new trustees, I find it pretty exciting to be able to introduce another trustee to you. I'm here all week, don't forget to tip your waiters and waitresses, so, thank you, thank you. So, anyway, Paul, Paul Trustee, he is, he's worked in information technology for the last 15 years, with the last date being focused on information security. He holds a master's degree in information security and assurance, as well as many information security certifications, specifically one is the CISSP Certified Information System Security Professional, a very challenging certification to achieve. Paul has worked for MedStar Mobile Healthcare. If you've ever seen an ambulance in this area, you're familiar with MedStar Mobile Healthcare, the local emergency medical service organization, excuse me, and Medtronic, a Fortune 500 organization dedicated to medical innovation in the past 20 years. His most recent accomplishments at MedStar include moving information security from an inefficient and reactive model to a proactive structured model designed to enable business innovation and organizational success. So, thank you, and without further ado, here is Paul Trustee.
Thank you, Mrs. Appleman and Dr. Giovinini. I'm a trustee of a different type, and I'm very pleased to be here and honored to have this opportunity to work with Tarrant County College.
We welcome you. You have to put up with Mr. Ragoo's jokes. Attached to your agenda is a two-page, single-spaced report of Dr. Giovinini's activities, including speeches and interviews and visits with some of us and others in the community, and we appreciate the time and energy that all of this takes. Dr. Morrison, you have a report on African American Expo, please?
Good evening. Thank you, Mrs. Appleman. I'm pleased to share information about the 17th Annual African American Health Expo, which was held on the Tarrant County College South Campus for the second time this year. I, I believe that we found a home for this community event, and it's an opportunity to engage community members in.
Health care.
Resources and opportunities to help toward better living. I've always said that anytime we can bring the community to the campus where they feel more comfortable within our environment, it's a great selling point. So I appreciated the hospitality and the hard work of Dr. Jordan and all of his staff members, who made this a very enjoyable event for the community. But I also want to share an event that was held April 29th, which was the Senior Citizens' Prom, which is hosted, was hosted for the first time on TCC South Campus. It's an event that initiated at the Martin Luther King Community Center and had outgrown those facilities. And this is where senior citizens dressed to the nines and came out to enjoy a real-life prom. And as I explained to some of the people when they talked to me about it, I said I've never been to a prom, my own senior prom. And that was because the high school that I went to integrated in 1964, when I was a sophomore, and in my small school, you did not go to prom until you were a junior or a senior. But due to integration, and I'm not sure if it was the Pentecostals, the Church of Christ, the Baptist of what, but there was no dancing, so we didn't have a prom. And so, it was delight for me to go to the senior prom on the south campus, and it was just delightful to see so many people from all across the county there. They had a wonderful time, and again, Dr. Jordan, your staff did a great job of making that possible and hosting them. And I would like to invite you to come to East Fort Worth Stop Six, June 3rd, for the Stop Six Shape Up. This is a health, wellness, fitness, and beauty expo, which brings people to the community. The whole idea is to initiate pride within the East Fort Worth Stop Six community, and it will be hosted by the Tarrant County College Opportunity Center on Saturday, June 3rd, from 8:30 until noon. So we appreciate these opportunities to engage with community people, to share our facilities, and to help them become aware of all of the great things that we at Tarrant County College do for and with the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Last month, we approved Mr. Heed as the second liaison to the Tarrant County College Foundation, and he attended his first five-hour meeting yesterday. Dr. McTach usually doesn't keep us that long, but this was a special retreat, and I've asked him to share some of what he experienced there.
Thank you. We both attended the annual planning and visioning session of the, of the foundation, and I found it very, very interesting, for a couple reasons. One, the chancellor gave an outstanding presentation.
Okay. The chancellor gave an outstanding presentation, as well as we had Chris Garvis talk to us about how to better communicate with our potential partners with a hook, with a, with a message, a purpose, and what we're, how, what we're communicating to get their participation in things related to Tarrant County College. And I, I think the, the foundation, Joe, is, is, is going to be even more aggressive than they have in the past in, in terms of, of trying to establish partnerships with industries and businesses around the, the county. We also talked about the legislation that was sponsored by the foundation to allow the foundation to invest oil and gas revenues in higher-yielding financial securities than, than they have been in the past, and that looks like it might get passed in this legislation, in this legislative session. So I think it is a very interesting meeting, and a good meeting, and I, I think the foundation is, 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 number one, listening to the chancellor. is, is, is number one, listening to the chancellor and, and, and going to become more aggressive in their, in their outlook on, on establishing more, getting more money so we can do more scholarships and, and other things. And they also looked at ways that the, the foundation could help us and participate in possible P3 projects, you know, what position the foundation would play and, and what role they would have in, in possible P3 ventures in the future. So it was a very good meeting, and I enjoyed it. Thank you, Joe.
Busy, busy times, so much going on that many of you have attended the Nurses' Penning Ceremony and the Toyota Event on South Campus and, of course, commencement, which was an interesting and very inspiring two sessions, and I thought it went very well, very efficient, but very meaningful for those involved. So thank you. I know everything is above and, oops, above and beyond what you already do, and, and we appreciate it. And we appreciate being included. I'm going to ask for a motion. Are there any other reports from any other board members that would like to make comments? I'm going to ask for a motion to amend the agenda so that we do our closed session first and move the election of officers after that. So if I might have that motion. Dr. Patrick seconded by Dr. Morrison. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So we will go into closed session to deliberate real property, Section 551.072, Texas Government Code, deliberation on personnel matters, Section 551.074, Texas Government Code, consultation with attorneys, Section 551.071, Texas Government Code. We should not be long, so if you all would like to wait, we will be back.
She was. I did. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Okay, I will call the meeting back to order again at 6:57. We're going to ask Ms. Robinson to describe the procedure for the election of officers. There is no other items to be acted on. The procedure used by this board is a Vavici election. The chair asks for nominations separately for each office. The chair will say X is nominated by Y. Are there any further nominations? When the nominations stop, the chair will announce that the nominations are closed. After the nominations are closed, voting for that one office takes place. Candidates are voted in the order in which they are nominated. The board will, the chair will ask, are, how many are in favor of candidate X, and those opposed say no. Only if the noes have it would you go on to the next candidate for that office. All right. I was also asked to put up the job descriptions for each office, and these are from our board policies, and you can see there the six board president, job duties, job requirements. Vice President, if the board president can't act, will perform all of those duties. Here are the duties and requirements of the secretary. And then the assistant secretary will act as secretary in the absence of the secretary. Okay, so if the board is ready, I will open the floor for nomination for the position of president. Dr. Patrick?
Yes, I would like to submit Louise Appleman for president of the board. You've done a fabulous job in the time I've been here, eight months observing you, but also your reputation preceded you before that, and I'd be honored to place your name in nomination.
Other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Conrad Heed. Conrad has expressed a desire to be the president of this board, the chair of this board. I greatly respect Louise Appleman, and I believe that Conrad Heed might be, should be given the opportunity to be president of this board, and I prospectively submit his name. Thank you.
Thank you. So now we take a vote. So, now we take a vote. Ms. Robinson on the two candidates. Be sure I do this right.
Yes, you announce that the nominations are closed, and then you'll take a vote.
I should make sure. Is that correct? Any other nominations? Okay, nominations are closed.
All right. And then you'll ask for the, who's in favor for the ayes for you, because you were the first one nominated.
Okay.
And only, and then you have to ask for the noes, and only if the noes carry it, would you go further to Mr. Heed.
Okay. Can she carry that motion, being, is that she's the subject of the motion?
I don't know any rule against it.
Okay. Weird. Okay, all those in favor of me. Dr. Patrick? Dr. Morrison?
Aye.
And Dr. Evans, and I guess I will vote for myself. So, four votes in the affirmative.
Now, you have to ask for the noes for the record?
Any noes?
No.
No.
Two noes and three noes missing off. So, it's four to three.
And so, now you can announce that Ms. Appleman is president of the board.
Ms. Appleman is president of the board. Thank you. Thank you all. All right, I will open the floor for vice, the position of vice president.
Conrad Heed.
Mr. Heed is being nominated by Mr. Greenhill. Other nominations? All those in favor of Mr. Heed? Aye. Aye, aye, aye. All seven of us. Congratulations.
Well, thank you.
Position of secretary.
Teresa Ayala.
Miss Ayala?
I was going to do that.
That two, you already have two votes. Any other nominations? All those in favor of Miss Ayala for position of secretary? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And I would like to nominate Diane Patrick as assistant secretary.
Succession plan.
I don't know. Any other nominations for assistant secretary? All those in favor of Dr. Patrick? Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. You be the assistant secretary. I think that concludes our business for the evening. We will see you on June 15th for our next regular meeting. Thank you very much.
Okay.